KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, a few videos to share with you this morning. I'm going to start with a video on the zoo's master plan. You'll remember that we were out there last week to talk about the future of the zoo.
I really want to thank those who were in Sedgwick County forty-seven years ago who focused on making the Sedgwick County Zoo a reality. It's now the state's largest tourist attraction. We are proud of it because it demonstrates what we can do when we work together. As a partner, we've been honored to be part of this process throughout the planning. We are excited about the master plan, along with the private sector. Think about both now and think about what our future is going to become. Let's build a foundation for the next generation.
We're thrilled to announce today our final master plan that will guide us through the next twenty-five years. The guiding model throughout the plan will be to do better for all the resident animals and exemplify what we did for elephants just a few years ago. We'll be reconfiguring the zoo to add more space for animals and even better experiences for our visitors. The first projects on the list are items that will address a few of the zoo's immediate needs: a new entry, expanded hammer leopard habitat, and an electric-powered train. Once those items are complete, we'll be able to think bigger. What if you could ride through the air with orangutans swinging next to you just a few feet away? Imagine watching your son or daughter get married in front of a 20,000-gallon stingray habitat. Or imagine waking up with a giraffe looking through your hotel window, right here in Wichita, Kansas. Our city has a great deal of momentum right now, and the zoo is thrilled to be part of that. But let's take just a moment, if we can, to talk about master plans and how organizations like our zoo accomplish them. Like others, we will tackle this in phases, and that is how we've accomplished so much of what we previously have accomplished out of the old master plan. It's by looking at what's most critical and factoring that in with what's doable. What we do know is the first phases of this effort, as Jeff described, needs to think about a new entryway, and that's really a key part of our first phase. With the right combination of opportunity and partnership, that this first phase will include at least one expanded animal exhibit, and that we think would likely be the hammer leopard exhibit. Your Sedgwick County Zoo will continue to grow and expand, and it will reflect positively on this community, be a great resource for this community and our families and the visitors that visit this area with us. So, thank you all for spending a warm, windy afternoon with us out here at the zoo, and we hope you'll participate as we move forward with a lot of the exciting things in our master plan.
All right, and the second video I would like to share with you this morning is for a ribbon-cutting we held recently for the EMS Post 8 in northern Sedgwick County. And so, this video will highlight those efforts.
I want to welcome everyone to this very important event that's involving our EMS. Our EMS is something that I am very proud of in Sedgwick County and have fought hard to make sure that we keep it the premier organization that it is, and it's one of only a handful across the United States that is fully accredited. Post 8 was originally, came into service in 1991, and it's been an active post ever since that period of time. However, if you'd have seen it just not too many months ago, this was kind of a disaster, actually. When I first walked through it, it needed an awful lot of work.
Several years ago, the plan was to tear this place down, buy some land somewhere else, and build a new one for $1.9 million. We kind of asked some questions about that and said, "Let's think about doing something else." We ended up with this, a remodel for a little over $400,000. That's still not cheap, but it saved $1.5 million, and I think we're going to have a fantastic facility here. This is an example of making good decisions, of supporting our first responders and public safety in a cost-effective way. I think the taxpayers can be proud of what we have, our EMS folks can be proud of what we have, and I look forward to this facility continuing to serve the community for many, many years to come.
I think it's a great improvement from what it was. It definitely allows for an additional truck in here and more space to move around. We're not sitting on top of each other. We have a place to cook, so that's great.
I was stationed up here for over ten years, and over that time, you saw just a subtle decline in the facility, but, boy, they've come in and just redone everything nice and ready to come back and serve this part of the community again.
This is a big day for the community up here in the north end of Sedgwick County. We renovated this building for $400,000. Originally, the project was scheduled to be a total demolish and redo and cost $1.9 million. We saved $1.5 million, but at the same time, we have a terrific facility that's been renovated. It's in a perfect location, and I think the crews will really enjoy it, and I think the community will benefit greatly.
All right, and a few more announcements. I'd like to remind everyone to be aware of the weather and possible flooding this week and into the weekend. Working with emergency management and our first responders, we want to remind you to not drive through water-covered roadways. Turn around, don't drown, and remember to tune into local media outlets for updates, or you can visit sedgwickcounty.org. And we have an emergency log as well to keep you updated on immediate updates regarding the weather and our area. And you can also find us on Facebook and Twitter, and use the Sedgwick County app for these updates as well. Commissioners, the regular and fire meetings today consist of meeting minutes, two board appointments, and a funding agreement between the Sedgwick County and the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee. And the final announcement for this morning is there will not be a commission meeting next week due to commissioners attending the Kansas Association of Counties Conference. So, with those announcements, Chairman, I will hand the meeting over to you.
Well, thank you, Kate. We appreciate it. Also, I appreciate you showing the two videos of two important events that have been taking place here in Sedgwick County over the last week or two. I want to welcome everyone that's attending today in the audience. I want to welcome all those that are attending on KPTS and those that will watch online. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, October 10th, 2018. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Father David Lees, Catholic Diocese of Wichita. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Good and gracious God, as we gather this day, we thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us, and in particular, the personal blessings upon these members of our commission, upon those who come today in attendance, those who present business, and our whole community that we represent in a leadership. We ask God to send your spirit upon the conversations and deliberations that will be held today, and that they lead to harmony and peace for our community, for all peoples of faith, and for those who seek the well-being of living in a community where we value human life, where we value friendship and relationships. And we pray for your blessings upon our prosperity, that we may always recognize that you are the source of all good, and that you give us the means to achieve your kingdom on earth. And so, help us in this day and these days ahead. Be with us in all ways, and let's join together in the prayer that Father's Son taught us. "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you very much for being here today. We sincerely appreciate the blessings. Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ranza.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I don't have anyone that signed up to speak on public agenda, but at this time, if anyone in the audience would like to speak, please approach the podium. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, Item A, resolution appointing Sharon Alslyger to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Commissioner Karen Powell, Deputy County Counselor. This resolution is to appoint Ms. Alslyger to the Board of the Citizens Advisory Board, which is in the Commissioner, Chairman Dennis's third district. The resolution is in order. Ms. Alslyger is qualified, and I'd recommend that you approve.
Thank you. Commissioners, as you all know, I do have a Citizens Advisory Board for District 3, and we have eleven members on it, and right now, we're short one of our members. And so, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Sharon to my Citizens Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And if you would please approach the podium, we're going to swear you in today and next month. We look forward to having you at our meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District 3 Citizens Advisory Board, so help me, God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
I just want to say thank you for the appointment, and I will try to do my very best. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you. And again, we meet the first Monday of every single month out at District, at Goddard School District Conference Center that they've got out there, 7:00 PM in the evening. Everyone's invited to attend. And the main thing is that it gives the citizens an opportunity where they can interface with the commission so that they can make sure that they provide their wants and needs to the commission. Thank you very much for serving. It's not paid, so we definitely appreciate you serving us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll need to sign the paperwork?
All right. I can do that.
While she's signing that, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item B, resolution appointing Cody Corbett to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the alternate classified employee position.
Commissioners, we have an agenda to appoint Cody Corbett. I move that we approve the nomination.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, Item C, funding agreement with the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee for $25,000.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance. The soon-to-be-commissioned USS Wichita is a littoral combat ship. It's one of the fastest, lightest, and most technologically advanced ships in the United States Navy, and these ships are designed to operate in shallow coastal waters across the globe and perform many types of tasks, from humanitarian and rescue, piracy and drug trafficking defense, anti-submarine warfare, and they can even launch helicopters. This USS Wichita would be the third Navy ship to bear the city of Wichita's name. And the USS Wichita crest bears a red, white, blue, and gold logo. The seal incorporates the Wichita flag, a buffalo skull to commemorate the Wichita Indians. There are stocks of wheat that represent Kansas' main agricultural crop, and feathers which represent this area's Native American heritage. The ship's full name is the USS Wichita Keeper of the Seas, which refers to the Keeper of the Plains statute, which is part of Sedgwick County's logo. Now, the specific item before you this morning is a funding agreement with the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee, and they are requesting funding of $25,000 to support both the ship's commissioning and, more importantly, provide support for the crew. The commissioning of this vessel is tentatively set for early 2019. It could be as early as January, and this funding would provide support for that as well as support for the crew. In essence, the community adopts the crew for the life of the ship's commissioning and provides them with necessities that aren't provided for when the Navy outfits a ship for its specific missions. This, the Wichita City Council unanimously approved financial support at this same level yesterday, and at this time, I would recommend that you approve the funding agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions. I'm just curious, is this a one-time consideration, or is this going to be something we'll reconsider as things that we provide begin to wear out down the road? What's the, what's the long-term obligation for us starting this today?
This is a standalone request. There isn't a continuing obligation, but I don't, I don't think there's anything to preclude them from coming before you again, but this is a standalone request.
Okay. This is economic development money? That's where we're getting the funds from, out of our budgets, economic development money?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just state up front, I think I'll support this. I've been asking people to help me determine what to do here, and I'm struggling with this one for a number of reasons. I think ultimately, I'll vote for it and I'll support it if there's a motion to do so, but I am, I'm concerned, I don't know if there's return on the investment to the community necessarily. Can you speak to that? Is there any type of ROI type of analysis that's been done on this?
We didn't do a return on investment.
I think it's kind of obvious, there probably isn't a point there, but there's not really an ROI, which is typically what we do, we consider spending the money out of this fund. And then, I'm curious, I understand there's thirty-two of these ships being built. I believe there's fifteen, as of this year, there'll be fifteen ships, I think, that are going to be active. Do we know of any other counties that have funded these ships in any way? Do we have that data?
I don't have any data about other specific governments. I know the USS Omaha was commissioned earlier. It's the same type of ship, and there was support, I think, from the local government there, as well as the business community, which is typically where the funding for these come from. I've heard that there's, the Sioux City has also provided financial support from public funds for the USS Sioux City ship.
I tried to find, I tried to find articles on that. I couldn't find anything, but, you know, again, I certainly understand the namesake of the, of the ship potentially wanting to provide some funding, especially if that was their decision early on, you know, to do that. Of course, this is Sedgwick County government, not city Wichita, so I understand, maybe it's different potentially for them, and we want to be good partners with our friends across the street as well. I just was wondering if there's any counties that have funded these ships, because these are all named after cities. And so, that was my question, is about whether county governments have ever involved, been involved in that.
I can't speak to any that have.
And I'll just, I'll just state also, again, I am a military veteran, I think three of us on this bench are, and I love the military. I, the personnel, certainly, we have to take care of them, and wherever they happen to serve in this world, if we can provide amenities to make their quality of life better, we should do that. And that's my, my primary reason for supporting this. It's a relatively small amount, but I would just like to make the point that, you know, during our budget cycle, we made decisions to not fund senior programs because of finances, and this bothers me that we continue to find money for things like this, in light of the fact that we, it seems like we're picking and choosing the things we want to fund, and I'm not sure we're very consistent. So, with that, I'm concerned. Nevertheless, I think I'll support this if there's a motion to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranza.
Just to clarify, you said economic development. Now, the documentation says it says it's coming from the B.O.C.C. Reserve and going to Culture and Recreation Community Program.
We can, I think to be present that we could use either of those two funds. If the funding agreement is set up that way, we can, it can clearly come out of that.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay. Let's go with the agreement.
It'll come out of the B.O.C.C. Reserve and go into. Culture and Recreation. Correct. Instead of economic development. Yeah. Okay. And, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from, questions on it from Brent? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this agenda item? Please approach the podium and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Morning, Mr. Commissioners. My name is Bill Nesselrod, and I'm on the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee. And to address Mr. Howe, part of that money is to go to help set up scholarships for the sailors of the USS Wichita, which hopefully will bring them to Wichita and Sedgwick County. So, you know, it may not pay us back immediately, but at some point in time, we could maybe see an advantage of having people come to Wichita and Sedgwick County to live and go to school and buy our groceries and whatnot. Also, the money is, is also going to, as I said, amenities, which includes, one of the biggest items that they really wanted was a barber chair, because they had to provide their own amenities. They'd like to have a couple TVs and some Kindles and some nice amenities that we take for granted here at home. So, I hope you will take that in consideration, you know. These gentlemen are sailing around the world with our name on it, and we're very proud of that, and they're protecting us. And as veterans, we know what it's like to be away from home without any, any kind of amenities, so I hope you'll, you'll vote favorably for us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? I'd like to make a couple statements. First of all, full disclosure, I also serve on the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee and have since it was first formed, and have a pretty good understanding of what goes into commissioning a ship in the United States Navy. The main thing that we're looking at is supporting that crew that's on there that's going in harm's way for us. The men and women that will serve on that ship do so as volunteers, and we, as Americans, ask them to go into harm's way to protect us. But what they're asking for, as Bill said, some amenities to be added to that ship so that as they go into harm's way, that they have some of the things that we enjoy every day back here. Even things like a barber's chair, as he mentioned, they are out for long periods of time, and the military does remain well-groomed. So, we appreciate that, in fact, that they have a need for something like that, and if anyone would like to donate one, that would be wonderful, so I'll make my pitch right now for that, so that we don't have to take it out of some of this other funding. A number of organizations have contributed for different things, and as Bill mentioned, scholarships is an important thing that we're looking at, is how can we help those men and women that are serving obtain advanced degrees if they want that, or further their education, or help their families do that. And so, one of the things, last week, Spirit, for example, indicated that they were going to contribute some funding for the USS Wichita for scholarships in particular. We've been talking to WSU about that also, and seeing if we can't get some kind of special rates for the men and women that serve on this ship and their families to be able to use WSU. But some of the other things that we're looking at, helping with that crew, are, they will have periods of time when they're not on duty, even though they're still onboard that ship. So, they would like to watch a movie once in a while. The Navy doesn't provide them TVs or something, any type of entertainment like that, or games and so forth, and we're looking at purchasing some TVs that they can watch movies so that they can have a little entertainment. We're looking at purchasing some laptop computers for the crew for a couple reasons. One is, that is one way that they can communicate with their families back home while they're deployed. Another thing that they can use it for is to use to attend college classes to advance their education. So, the things that the committee is trying to do is for that ship and for those men and women that are serving our country in remote parts of the world. That ship is, on the fantail of it, it has USS Wichita written on the aft end of that ship, and I hope I'm using the right term for the Navy, but it says Wichita. That name is going around the world for the next twenty-five to thirty years. It will be represented. One of the things that mentioned that there are three buffalo heads on that crest, the reason that there are three on there is this is the third ship that's ever been named USS Wichita in the history of the Navy, and those other two buffalo heads on there represent those other two ships that went in harm's way carrying the name of Wichita. So, I have to admit, I've been serving on this committee since it was formed, and so I do care very deeply that we support, from Sedgwick County, in some way, the men and women that are going to be serving us, our nation, and representing the city of Wichita throughout the world. I don't see anyone else that would like to comment, so I would like to make a motion that we provide $25,000 to the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee for the use of supporting the crew, the men and women that will go in harm's way for us.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And if you would please approach the podium, we're going to swear you in today and next month. We look forward to having you at our meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District 3 Citizens' Advisory Board, so help me, God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
I just want to say thank you for the appointment, and I will try to do my very best. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you. And again, we meet the first Monday of every single month out at District, at Goddard School District Conference Center that they've got out there, 7:00 PM in the evening. Everyone's invited to attend, and the main thing is that it gives the citizens an opportunity where they can interface with the commission so that they can make sure that they provide their wants and needs to the commission. Thank you very much for serving. It's not paid, so we definitely appreciate you serving us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll need to sign the paperwork?
All right. I can do that.
While she's signing that, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item B, resolution appointing Cody Corbett to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the alternate classified employee position.
Commissioners, we have an agenda to appoint Cody Corbett. I move that we approve the nomination.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, Item C, funding agreement with the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee for $25,000.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance. The soon-to-be-commissioned USS Wichita is a littoral combat ship. It's one of the fastest, lightest, and most technologically advanced ships in the United States Navy, and these ships are designed to operate in shallow coastal waters across the globe and perform many types of tasks, from humanitarian and rescue, piracy and drug trafficking defense, anti-submarine warfare, and they can even launch helicopters. This USS Wichita would be the third Navy ship to bear the city of Wichita's name. And the USS Wichita crest bears a red, white, blue, and gold logo. The seal incorporates the Wichita flag, a buffalo skull to commemorate the Wichita Indians. There are stocks of wheat that represent Kansas' main agricultural crop, and feathers which represent this area's Native American heritage. The ship's full name is the USS Wichita Keeper of the Seas, which refers to the Keeper of the Plains statute, which is part of Sedgwick County's logo. Now, the specific item before you this morning is a funding agreement with the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee, and they are requesting funding of $25,000 to support both the ship's commissioning and, more importantly, provide support for the crew. The commissioning of this vessel is tentatively set for early 2019. It could be as early as January, and this funding would provide support for that as well as support for the crew. In essence, the community adopts the crew for the life of the ship's commissioning and provides them with necessities that aren't provided for when the Navy outfits a ship for its specific missions. This, the Wichita City Council unanimously approved financial support at this same level yesterday, and at this time, I would recommend that you approve the funding agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions. I'm just curious, is this a one-time consideration, or is this going to be something we'll reconsider as things that we provide begin to wear out down the road? What's the, what's the long-term obligation for us starting this today?
This is a standalone request. There isn't a continuing obligation, but I don't, I don't think there's anything to preclude them from coming before you again, but this is a standalone request.
Okay. This is economic development money? That's where we're getting the funds from, out of our budgets, economic development money?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just state up front, I think I'll support this. I've been asking people to help me determine what to do here, and I'm struggling with this one for a number of reasons. I think ultimately, I'll vote for it and I'll support it if there's a motion to do so, but I am, I'm concerned, I don't know if there's return on the investment to the community necessarily. Can you speak to that? Is there any type of ROI type of analysis that's been done on this?
We didn't do a return on investment.
I think it's kind of obvious, there probably isn't a point there, but there's not really an ROI, which is typically what we do, we consider spending the money out of this fund. And then, I'm curious, I understand there's thirty-two of these ships being built. I believe there's fifteen, as of this year, there'll be fifteen ships, I think, that are going to be active. Do we know of any other counties that have funded these ships in any way? Do we have that data?
I don't have any data about other specific governments. I know the USS Omaha was commissioned earlier. It's the same type of ship, and there was support, I think, from the local government
You know, to do that, of course, this is Sedgwick County Government, not City Wichita. So I understand maybe it's different potentially for them, and we want to be good partners with our friends across the street as well. But I just was wondering if there's any counties that have funded these ships, because things are all named after cities. And so that was my question is about whether county governments have ever been involved in that.
I can't speak to any that have.
And I'll just state also, again, I am a military veteran, I think three of us on this bench are, and I love the military. The personnel certainly, we have to take care of them, and wherever they happen to serve in this world, if we can provide amenities to make their quality of life better, we should do that. And that's my primary reason for supporting this. It's a relatively small amount, but I would just like to make the point that, you know, during our budget cycle, we made decisions to not fund senior programs because of finances, and this bothers me that we continue to find money for things like this, in light of the fact that we, it seems like we're picking and choosing the things we want to fund, and I'm not sure we're very consistent. So with that, I'm concerned. Nevertheless, I think I'll support this if there's a motion to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranza.
Just to clarify, you said economic development. Now, the documentation says it's coming from the B O C C Reserve and going to Culture and Recreation Community Program.
We can, I think to be present that we could use either of those two funds. If the funding agreement is set up that way, we can clearly come out of that.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay. Let's go with the agreement.
It'll come out of the B S C C Reserve and go into.
Culture and Recreation.
Correct.
Instead of economic development.
Yeah.
Okay. And, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on it from Brett? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this agenda item? Please approach podium and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Morning, Mr. Commissioners. My name is Bill Nesselrod, and I'm on the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee. And to address Mr. Howe, part of that money is to go to help set up scholarships for the sailors of the USS Wichita, which hopefully will bring them to Wichita and Sedgwick County. So, you know, it may not pay us back immediately, but at some point in time, we could maybe see an advantage of having people come to Wichita and Sedgwick County to live and go to school and buy our groceries and whatnot. Also, the money is also going to, as I said, amenities, which includes, one of the biggest items that they really wanted was a barber chair, because they had to provide their own amenities. They'd like to have a couple TVs and some Kindles, and some nice amenities that we take for granted here at home. So I hope you will take that in consideration. You know, these gentlemen are sailing around the world with our name on it, and we're very proud of that, and they're protecting us. And as veterans, we know what it's like to be away from home without any kind of amenities. So I hope you'll vote favorably for us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item?
I'd like to make a couple statements. First of all, full disclosure, I also serve on the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee and have since it was first formed, and have a pretty good understanding of what goes into commissioning a ship in the United States Navy. The main thing that we're looking at is supporting that crew that's on there that's going in harm's way for us. The men and women that will serve on that ship do so as volunteers, and we, as Americans, ask them to go into harm's way to protect us. But what they're asking for, as Bill said, some amenities to be added to that ship so that as they go into harm's way, that they have some of the things that we enjoy every day back here. Even things like a barber's chair, as he mentioned, that they are out for long periods of time, and the military does remain well groomed. So we appreciate that, in fact, that they have a need for something like that. And if anyone would like to donate one, that would be wonderful. So I'll make my pitch right now for that, so that we don't have to take it out of some of this other funding. A number of organizations have contributed for different things, and as Bill mentioned, scholarships is an important thing that we're looking at, is how can we help those men and women that are serving obtain advanced degrees if they want that, or further their education, or help their families do that. And so one of the things, last week, Spirit, for example, indicated that they were going to contribute some funding for the USS Wichita for scholarships in particular. We've been talking to W S U about that also, and seeing if we can't get some kind of special rates for the men and women that serve on this ship and their families to be able to use W S U. But some of the other things that we're looking at helping with that crew are, they will have periods of time when they're not on duty, even though they're still onboard that ship. So they would like to watch a movie once in a while. The Navy doesn't provide them TVs or something, any type of entertainment like that, or games and so forth. And we're looking at purchasing some TVs that they can watch movies, so that they can have a little entertainment. We're looking at purchasing some laptop computers for the crew, for a couple reasons. One is, that is one way that they can communicate with their families back home while they're deployed. Another thing that they can use it for is to use to attend college classes to advance their education. So the things that the committee is trying to do is for that ship and for those men and women that are serving our country in remote parts of the world. That ship is, on the fan tail of it, has USS Wichita written on the aft end of that ship. And I hope I'm using the right term for the Navy, but it says Wichita. That name is going around the world for the next 25 to 30 years. It will be represented. One of the things that mentioned that there are three buffalo heads on that crest, the reason that there are three on there is this is the third ship that's ever been named USS Wichita in the history of the Navy. And those other two buffalo heads on there represent those other two ships that went in harm's way carrying the name of Wichita. So I have to admit, I've been serving on this committee since it was formed, and so I do care very deeply that we support, from Sedgwick County, in some way, the men and women that are going to be serving us, our nation, and representing the city of Wichita throughout the world. I don't see anyone else that would like to comment, so I would like to make a motion that we provide $25,000 to the USS Wichita Commissioning Committee for the use of supporting the crew, the men and women that will go in harm's way for us.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. I want to thank my fellow commissioners. I know three of them on this bench are military, and we have other military, our manager and other folks in the audience, and I know that they understand what those men and women are doing for our country. Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Miss Manager?
All right. Miss Chair, it's Mike Scholes, County Manager. Recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items Delta through Oscar.
Move to approve Delta through Oscar. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Commissioner Howe?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have an off agenda item I'd like to present at some point. So is this an appropriate time?
This is the perfect time. You want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we insert an off agenda item to consider the discussion on the Task Force letter to the State of Kansas.
Okay. I've moved. Will we second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday in our staff meeting, we had a discussion regarding the Task Force. What this is basically is every 10 years roughly, the State of Kansas, KDOT, requests local communities to submit to them public works-type projects, larger projects that the State of Kansas may be interested in funding, has regional significance. And of course, we have a number of ways to communicate with the state. We do that through WAMPO, and I think many of the cities and counties potentially also submit requests for them to consider. And so that's what this is all about. And so there's been a number of things we've talked about as a commission, and they're certainly on this letter, and I support them all. But there's one item of a discussion yesterday in our staff meeting that I feel like there is a little bit of a disagreement between the commissioners. I would like to, in just a moment, I'll make a motion that we would follow the draft version of this letter. It was presented to commissioners through an email a few days ago. In this draft version of this letter, it has all the same projects we discussed yesterday. And for the listening audience, it's basically the North Junction, the Northwest Expressway, East and West Kellogg. Those are primarily the items on this list. But what I'd like to see added to this list, according to the draft, the email, said that this was a request of the City of Derby. And although cities may have differences of opinion, the City of Wichita doesn't support the Northwest Expressway on our list, and so this is our list. This is not a city's list. This is our list, the things that we feel are significant. Although we appreciate the City of Derby, you know, advocating for the Arc 95 project to be on there, we could either agree or disagree, but regardless where we end up, this is our list. And so it was discussed yesterday, you know, this was added to the list at the request of the City of Derby, but there's other things that other cities would request. For example, Wichita would request rail service. It's not on this list, and so there's some inconsistency. Why would the thing for Derby be on here but not the thing for Wichita? So I'd like to stress once again, this is our list. I think that right now the commission may not want the passenger rail to be on this list. That's another discussion. But I, as a commissioner, would need to advocate for the Arc 95 project, and let me tell you why. I'd like to read these two short paragraphs that are in this letter. I think it explains it fairly well. It says, "Sedgwick County joins with the City of Derby in support of a project to begin construction of a Parkway system across southern Sedgwick County. The Arc 95 project would construct an interchange at K-15 and 95th Street South with a new crossing over the Arkansas River and improve 95th Street South over to US 81. That route would also provide an opportunity for interchange with the Kansas Turnpike. The K-15 interchange would improve safety and alleviate conflicts between vehicular traffic and high-traffic line operated by Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. Studies have shown that development of the Parkway would serve the transportation needs of the southern Sedgwick County for a long term at a much lower cost than an interstate-level freeway system." Let me just say, and Director Spears, if you have the ability to just, you've been here, you know, long enough to probably know, when was this project initially discussed? It became part of the discussion here at least 10 years ago. Can you indicate about how long ago this started?
Oh, that's hard to say. It was over 10 years ago when there was a study done, and, you know, for another loop around Wichita, and it was determined that in that area, there's been so much development that it's, would, the cost of the right-of-way would be, well, almost insurmountable. And that's why the Parkway was considered the best way to go, and we agree with that. We've had public hearings on this. We've had support. There's some people opposed to it, but Derby supports it. They called us this past week and asked that we add that to our list. We didn't see any harm in doing so. I think the state wants to get a whole list of projects throughout the state that they want to do. And this project is not as far along the timeline as the other four are on our list, because there's been no design on it, just ideas and preliminary drawings. But I think it's important to put it in front of everybody, and Derby does support it. And we just thought it was not, would not cause really any problem to add it to our list, but it's certainly worthy of discussion.
Well, let me just say that although we have not heard from the mayor of the City of Hazeville or the city council members of Hazeville, I have had discussions with them in the past, and they're very strong advocates for the Arc 95 project. And of course, the entire Parkway system would probably be a multi-stage project if it happens ever. It may not be in my lifetime, and maybe it's a long-term goal, but eventually we could connect East Kellogg back to West Kellogg on a south loop essentially called a Parkway, not rather than our freeway system like we see on, let's say, K-96 on the northeast part of the city. It would be more of a straight sections of roads, basically Greenwich from Kellogg down Greenwich to 95th Street, 95th Streets West, I think, out to, Mr. Spears, do you know which street it would end up on eventually?
Oh, I think we're looking at around Greenwich Road, somewhere in that area.
On the west side.
On the west side, up around 119.
Okay, so out of 119th Street, then back over to Kellogg. And so this would be a multi-stage project. We're talking about something that requires many discussions and many different projects over the years, but eventually, someday down the road, that may happen. Here's what's going on from my perspective, and I don't think I'm alone on this. Anybody who comes from south Wichita, Derby, Mulvane, south Wichita, the congestion, I feel, on K-15 and Rock Road is concerning. If we're going to continue to have growth in this community, we need to have a way to relieve that pressure, and that's what Arc 95 is designed to do. Second of all, the only place you can actually get across railroad tracks confidently would be in downtown Wichita. And some of these track crossings are four miles apart, and there is public safety. We have an EMS and a fire station on Oliver near 47th Street that cannot cross the railroad tracks and must wait for trains to go on by. Now, I personally think an overpass at 47th and K-15 would be a reasonable, good solution to that, but that's not a mature project. That's just an idea that's floating out there mostly in my head right now. But nevertheless, Arc 95 is more mature. We have had studies on that. We had a study on this just a couple years ago, and the train traffic is continuing to increase. Public safety is a concern. Congestion is a concern. And all I'm saying is, this has a spot on this list. Rather than eliminate that, it's not going to displace funding for these other projects. That's not going to happen, but they certainly deserve a spot on the list. So I would ask my colleagues to support me in putting Arc 95, not because of, although I support the City of Derby and I agree with them in this case, this is not because they asked for it. I'm not here to support Wichita's list or Derby's list necessarily. If we happen to agree with them on a project that's on their list and on our list, like the North Junction is. The reason this deserves a spot on this list is I, as a commissioner, understand the importance of this, and I'm asking you, my colleagues, to support me keeping Arc 95 on this list. And so with that, I don't think any other changes need to be made to this draft letter. I would submit or make a motion that we would accept this draft letter and turn this into our formal letter to the State of Kansas. That's my motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Ranza?
I'm fine with this testimony. My only issue here is that we have it listed in order, but it's not numbered. And I don't know if we need to add numbers, but we need to make sure it's very clear when it goes forward, that we have priorities, and we want to go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and not skip over 2 and go to 4 or something. And we, and when you give the testimony, and it may be self-evident, but it's not, you know, when it gets up there and all mixed up in the pie and sausage making and everything going on.
You want to just simply put numbers on there, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
We can do that. Make it clear when we have our testimony, this is a priority. Please go boom, 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 boom. I mean, that's my position.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I did talk to you briefly about this yesterday, because obviously this is a long-term project. We're looking minimum 20 years or longer. Keeping on there, like I mentioned, I think is a good thing, but I didn't know if there was a different way to put it in a footnote. I know that we've talked to Councilmember Meitzner, and he's really pushing for the passenger rail service, and I know that's, I believe, the City of Wichita's second-largest priority, that if we do put some of these other projects that are particularly a high priority for our different cities, would that be prudent for us to add that as well in some type of a secondary draft?
Okay.
I mean, I'll follow your lead on it.
Good. Any other comments on this? Well, I've got a couple things. First of all, David, what year would they start on Arc 95 if, knowing that we haven't even done design?
Are you talking about construction?
Ah.
Oh, that's not on the radar. I mean, I don't know. There's a lot of things that are going to have to line up. It's going to take tremendous amount of money. You have an interchange on both ends. A turnpike's going to be involved with an interchange there, so I don't have an answer to that, but it's down the line. I mean, I would say.
Be a lot of ride.
Probably right-of-way to buy, utilities to move. I think you're looking at at least 20 years.
Okay. Well, and I understand where Commissioner Howe is coming from. He's got an election coming up, and he wants to make sure that he's representing his district. And that's all well and good. I don't have a problem with that. That's what we do, is represent our districts. But at the same time, we've got to remember, Arc 95 is not the only other thing that was requested by people in our community. We have projects up on 254 that have been requested in our county. We have projects on K-96 that were requested in our county. We've got a passenger rail system that was requested in our county. We can't put all these on here. If we get $100 million, and our number-one priority is $100 million, if we get $100 million, it is our number-one priority, it's going to solve all of our transportation problems going in that area for years to come. We need to be thankful, but we do still need to have other priorities on the list, because in case any additional funding comes down, we need to be ready. These other things that are on here have already been designed and engineered, with the exception of Arc 95. We have the problem of what do we say we're going to support? The first four priorities we have on here are very, very high priorities that are already ready to go. Which communities do we say we support? Wichita is our biggest, and we're going to say, no, we don't support you, but we do support Derby. We don't support the folks that need something going up K-96. We don't support the folks going up 254. There are a lot of different things that are being asked for, and we had to sit down and, as a commission, make hard decisions on what we think that we can hopefully convince this legislative visionary task force on transportation. And I believe our original four, but I do agree, we need to add something else to it. I'm not going to discount Arc 95, and I don't intend to discount it. I think we need to say that we support, and add one more sentence in here, that we support the other projects that are recommended within our county. And that way, the folks that are saying we need K-96, the folks are saying we need 254, the folks are saying that we need Arc 95, the folks that are saying we need passenger rail, we're saying we support that, because they're part of our community. But to call out something that's over 20 years in the future and add it to our list, I don't think is necessary if we add a statement. So I'd like to make an alternate motion that we adopt a change, but instead of adding specifically Arc 95, and if we want to list all these other things, I don't care, but I think what we really need to say is that we support the other communities and agencies in our county to bring the transportation needs that we need for our county. I'd like to make that as an alternate motion. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howe?
Mr. Chairman, you give me a number of things I need to comment on, and I, let me just address the first one. This is not because of an election. I find that to be an offensive comment. That's not what this is about. I'm a commissioner of my district, and I understand the importance of this, of this new road. As I've said already, there's tremendous pressure on Rock Road and K-15. There's accidents there all the time. There's fatality accidents. And I don't see there's any other reasonable solution to relieving that pressure. And as I've already said, the train traffic's increasing. There's public safety concerns about getting access to the people from where we are stationed. I've given you my reasons as to why this belongs. Whether Derby would have requested this or not doesn't matter to me. I would have requested it as a commissioner regardless. So it would be on this list right now. I would be making this motion right now, regardless of what the City of Derby may have requested. This is coming from me as a commissioner. Mr. Spears, do we have a date when we would do the Northwest Expressway?
It's designed, the state's buying right-of-way, the county's participating, about a third of the right-of-ways has been purchased. The turnpike is looking at a study for a piece of it right now, up at the north end, to possibly turn a part of it into a toll road. And so it's, there's more discussion on it than Arc 95. But no, there's no date as to when it will be constructed.
We have three more stages of construction on the Kellogg and 235 interchange. I don't know if this are all engineered. I assume they are. The North Junction has four phases. Second phase is the most important. I don't know if all four of those are engineered. I'd like you to comment on those, please. And then, of course, West Kellogg and East Kellogg, going all the way out to 135th Street West and 143rd Street East, requiring major improvements. Are those also engineered? Please comment.
East Kellogg is not designed from 143rd on. West Kellogg is designed, and so that's why we put the west ahead of the east. At first, we had them the same, but then later in our discussions down at Public Works, we moved the west ahead of the east for that reason. And for the North Junction, it's be the first phase, which is a hundred, just a little over $100 million. And that's well underway. As you know, the county has already agreed with the city to give in $500,000 to help purchase right-of-way and do some other things. We applied for a grant. We're trying to get that. So a lot of things happening on that end.
Okay. So engineering's not complete for all of these projects, although they're going to stay on the list. And I've already stated this, but I feel like I have to repeat myself now. The reason I'm advocating for this is not because it's been requested by other jurisdictions. It belongs on this list because it's an important regional project to a county commissioner. And I'm not trying to put a statement in here that says we support all of the cities and all of their requests. That, to me, is not going to weigh heavily on the decision-makers in PPA. Having something singled out on this list and explained on our list has weight, and I think, again, Arc 95 belongs on this list. It's not going to displace, if you get $100 million, as you stated, and you worked on this list, and I'll support Commissioner Ranza's idea of putting priority numbers on this, if that helps, you're not going to get to Arc 95 probably, because those projects will consume much more than $100 million. So nevertheless, it's not that I don't support Wichita, or it's not that I don't support other jurisdictions. That's not the point. This is not their list. This is our list, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody, but this is our list, and I think the things we believe are important should be on this list. And Arc 95 is clearly important to district, any district. Let me just say, not just District 5, but District 2 and 5. All of south Sedgwick County would benefit from this. So it's not about me. It's certainly not about the election. This is me speaking on behalf of my constituents, understanding how this is becoming a quality of life problem. It's a public safety problem. And Arc 95 belongs on this list for all reasons I've stated. Mr. Chairman, I would urge you to withdraw your motion. Let's have a vote on my motion. If it fails, that's fine. You can make your motion at that time. But I think we deserve to have a vote on my motion to see where the commissioners are on Arc 95 specifically. I would ask you to withdraw your motion. Let's vote on my motion, and if it fails, then please make your motion, and I'll support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranza?
Yeah. I agree that this is Sedgwick County's list here. I actually am reluctant to put a general statement that we support all the other communities' requests, because we don't know what all they are, and we need to focus on what we think should be the long-term vision for Sedgwick County. You know, the fact that City Wichita has passenger rails number two and doesn't even have Northwest Bypass, I don't want to imply an agreement with that. That's a problem, I think. We've had some conversations about that. We're thinking long-term. This is for a possibility of a transportation package by the state that could have billions of dollars of funding. I asked several questions yesterday to try and figure out what the size of it would be and how much money we might be able to expect, and I was originally reluctant to include Arc 95, but I want to make sure we have enough projects that, you know, if the money comes our way, that we'll projects that, you know, if the money comes our way, that we'll be able to use that. You know, we're going to put the North Junction because of safety, then we have the Northwest Bypass, which I think is a long-term vision. I mean, it's going to be, I think, big economic development. I think it was number three in the state as far as economic development when it was rated a few years ago because it connects everything. And if Arc 95 actually can kind of connect things at south at the same time, and then we've got Kellogg going through, I see from a county perspective how this helps address everything. I mean, we're, so we could have Northeast and Northwest Bypass, Arc 95, and then Kellogg going through the middle. I think that's where, as a county, we should focus on. There's lots of other little projects that all the other cities can support, et cetera. It just so happens that some of these on here coincide with what Wichita wants, some don't. This happens to coincide with what maybe Derby or Haysville wants and others don't. But from a big perspective of Cedric County, I think these projects make sense, and I would urge us to stick with these projects right here. I, and if, the issue is Arc 95, I'd rather take Arc 95 out than put in a statement that says we support everybody else's stuff when we don't even know what all they're asking. And some of them, we might actually not, not really support to begin with because of the bigger picture. So let's, I would, that's where I'm at. And I would also urge the chairman to reconsider his motion for those purposes. Let's look big picture and see what would be best for Cedric County as a whole.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So listening to all these compelling arguments, what I think would be best is prioritizing it on the list, also keeping Arc 95 on there. As Commissioner Howell said, it's important to some people in my district as well, particularly the people that live very far south. But mention in there our acknowledgement that this is a long-term project, that this is just keeping it out into discussion, changing up the verbiage, and maybe having you and Commissioner Howell work on what that verbiage is, but leaving it in there, acknowledging that these other four are ready to start as soon as we can get the funding. So I do think it would be prudent for us to keep, keep it alive somehow in this list if, if you could come up with some, some verbiage that would acknowledge that, that we're aware this is a long-term, this is a long-term dream for us. And going back to the priorities that Commissioner Renzau mentioned, listing, numbering them out.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
I have a question for Director Spears, and that is, is this not due to the state before our next BOCC meeting, which will be in two weeks?
Due Monday by 3:00.
Okay. So we don't have time to push this out and work on this, you know, as single commissioners and bring it back before an open meeting to, to approve. And so I guess, if you want to do that, I guess we're going to have to develop that statement right now to insert that as a red line to this draft document. We're not going to have a chance to do this behind, you know, later on.
I think we could vote to authorize, you do, and the Public Works Director to finalize the, you know. I think we could, we could propose this as a big, long-term vision for how we see the, you know, the whole Cedric County being able to be circled around and everything that, I think it would probably be a good idea. And that we try to get as much money. I think last time Commissioner O'Donnell was saying, we got a big chunk of the money out of, what was it called? T-Works. It's a similar type deal that they're looking at. So we don't know how much money might be out there, and we might be surprised if we're not prepared to put a pitch for it, then we might miss out.
Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listening to the discussion, I think I am in agreement with what I understand to be the last, the last conversation, that is that we prioritize our first, and number our first four priorities, and then have a statement below the line that just says Arc 95 is, and other projects are of high importance for us for future planning.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know why we just will not carry the numbers forward and call Arc 95 the fifth project, you know? This is, this is a fluid, there's things may develop in the, in the future we don't know about. As of we know, what we know right now, that's our fifth priority. I have other ideas and things we could throw on this list. They're not ready for public discussion. So this is our priorities. That's number five. Why, why put a line on there and say, things below this line have less importance? I would simply say, number one through five.
I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, but I've attended each one of these, and I attended the WAMPO meeting yesterday. WAMPO is going to have a statement at the end of theirs that says that they support all of the other proposals that are out there, and it's kind of a general statement at the end. And I think that's a very good way that we can say that this region has a lot of transportation needs. We all recognize that there are a tremendous amount of transportation needs that are in this area. We're blessed in some ways and cursed in others. First of all, we're blessed the fact that we've got 135 that runs all the way across our nation so that we can move goods and services. It connects fairly easily up to I-70 up north. We need some way of bypassing some of the things that are in Wichita that, and things like Northwest Bypass would help bring that transportation around and ease the congestion in the city of Wichita and preserve the roads in the city of Wichita. 254 is a very dangerous road going up towards El Dorado, and we have people that are killed on there because there's no controlled access, and we have people that are advocating for 254 to have some major improvements. K-96 is another arterial that helps us connect 135 going up to the northwest and eventually ending up upon I-70 if we need transportation moving that way. David Spears will tell you that transportation is the lifeblood of our economy, and that's what we have to look at, is transportation is our lifeblood. And what do we need in order to be able to provide that transportation? We're arguing honestly over a project that isn't even designed yet, and when there are others that are out there that have been designed. I'm not arguing it's not an important project for Sedgwick County. I'm just saying that Sedgwick County has a lot of needs. We have four major needs. We disagree with Wichita on one of them. They won't add the Northwest Bypass, even though that the last time this commission, this Transportation Visionary Committee met, and they did economic analysis of all the projects across the state, the Northwest Bypass was tied at number two in the entire state for economic impact. So I disagree with the city of Wichita on that. The city of Wichita wants to add passenger rail, and I'm going to go to the meeting on the 18th. They've got a breakout session in the morning to talk about passenger rail because I don't, I guess I don't understand it. I can't vision in my mind how that someone driving up to Newton or going over here, if they happen to open up a way to get on a passenger train here in Wichita, but having a few passengers travel through Sedgwick County is going to have an economic benefit to us. Yeah, 20 years from now, I think Arc 95 will have an economic benefit to that part of our, our community. And I'm not saying that we don't advocate for Arc 95. I'm not saying that we don't advocate for 254. I'm not saying that we don't advocate for 96, all these other projects that have been brought up. I'm just saying I don't want to water down our impact that we have. We have four major areas that we've been talking about, and three of them are already designed, and one of them is in the near future. So I think that a general statement at the end, but I don't object to Commissioner Renzau's recommendation that if the commission says that we can work with Commissioner Howell to find some kind of language to put in there, that we work that out in the future. So that's where I'm coming from and what my concerns are. Commissioner Howell?
Commissioner, Chairman Dennis, I'm curious. If we prioritize these one through five, and we make that clear, those folks that have the funds, if they would fund these projects in that order, let's say they finish one through four, and there's money more, there's more money available, would you not want to have this on that list? I think we would.
But it's not designed, Commissioner.
Well, Chairman Dennis, everything, everything...
On the list, it won't do us any good because we can't spend any money on it.
Okay. Well, Chairman Dennis, there have been numbers of studies. We've had, we've had drawings. It's not engineered. You're correct. The engineering's not complete. We've not finalized the best design as agreed to by the studies that have been done. The next step would be, would be the engineering, and then, of course, cost estimating, if I understand correctly. Every project goes through this evolution. Every project goes through the very same steps. And so, yes, these other projects are ahead of Arc 95. Doesn't mean that those, those steps can't be done. It doesn't mean that it doesn't have relevance. In the next 10 years, when this, the last T-Works program, I think, I heard yesterday someone said eight billion. I remember 10 billion, but maybe I'm wrong. A 10-year plan, let's say it's 10 billion over 10 years, the state would spend on projects like these. Is it possible in the 10 years that the Arc 95 would, would get some engineering completed and get some estimating done and still stay on this list and potentially be an advocate for some additional funds if the state should find those funds? All we're saying is, I guarantee you, every, every project on every list of every jurisdiction is not engineered. They're not all mature projects. Some projects are ahead of other projects. All I'm saying is, for the very same reason you're advocating for Northwest Bypass, and I support that. It's not my district, by the way. Neither is the North Junction. I support those projects because they're regionally significant to Cedric County, and I support them with passion. But the very same reason we would create a brand-new road called Northwest Bypass, or Northwest Expressway, exactly the same rationale is used for the Arc 95 project. It's just, it's, it's further, it's, it's not as mature. Okay? I understand that. I agree. All I'm saying is, number it one through five, leave it on the list, a statement that says these are our priorities in this order. North Junction's number one. I support that. Northwest Bypass, number two. I support that. East and West Kellogg, I support those. We don't have anything else for number five. Why not add number five? We have a fifth project. Stick it on the list. Call it number five. All I'm asking you guys to do is to support a project we know about that's significant, significantly important to Cedric County. The motion is, I hope the motion is, I'm not sure where we are with the motions at this point. My motion, if I would make, if I could make the motion, clarify a motion, I support the idea of putting priority numbers on this. Number them one through five. Leave it on the list. Another statement's not necessary, and that's what we should pass. I hope you'll support me enough to at least have a public vote on what I just stated. If you want to vote no, that's fine. We can go on with this discussion and do something else. But I, as a commissioner, I'm requesting a vote on leaving this on there as number five. Make that clear. It's a fifth priority. But let's vote on this, and let's find out where the commissioners are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. But to say that this is our fifth most important project, I can't say that because I can't say that something on 254 might not be more important than Arc 95. I can't say that's a possibility that there's something on K-96 that might be more important than Arc 95. I don't know enough about rail right now to tell you that that might be our number five. So if I say that this is our fifth priority out of five...
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, then with all due respect, let my motion stand. Let's vote. Just please vote no, and you can do whatever you want after that. That's all I'm asking you to do, sir.
Well, we've got an, we've got parliamentary procedures. We've got an alternate motion that we will address first, and then if it fails, then we'll go for the second.
All right. Thank you.
For the original motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But can you clarify what your motion was? Because there's been so much follow-up conversation, and I've heard you say, oh, I like what Commissioner Renzau said, or you like what I said about, so I think your motion needs to be clarified to figure out if we're all on the same page or not.
Certainly. My, my alternate motion is, and I agree with Commissioner Renzau, so my alternate motion is to number these one, two, three, four, and a fifth stating that we support the other communities and agencies in our region on their priorities.
That's what I thought I seconded.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I may support that motion if, once we dispense with what I consider to be the motion. I need, I need to vote on the motion as I stated at first, and if that was failed, then maybe I would support your motion. But I need to be clear, if I vote no on your motion, it's not that I don't support it. I just need the other motion to be considered first. So I hope people understand that if I do, if I vote no, it's not, I don't support what you're suggesting, but this is out of order in my opinion. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I understand that. Commissioner O'Donnell was first.
No.
Commissioner Renzau was first. Okay. Commissioner Renzau was first.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm not going to support this, this motion. I don't want people to think I don't support these other priorities, which I do. I'll reiterate, I was initially reluctant to include Arc 95, but after listening to everything, I just think it should be part of the overall vision for Cedric County of how we're going to get traffic around everything. So that's why I think it would rise to the top. And so that's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not be supportive of this because I want to make an alternate motion if this one does fail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Does everyone understand that we have an alternate motion on the table? And you, you have the alternate motion?
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right. Madam Girk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Renzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Commissioner Renzau, or Commissioner Howell, rather?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make an alternate motion that we would number these one through five and add a statement regarding the priority numbers and what that represents so that the, the people in Topeka would understand this is our list in priority one through five. And with that, I would submit the letter as written. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're making, are you amending your original motion?
Well, my original motion did not include the, the topic of priority numbers. So yes, I'm amending my original motion with an alternate to, we'd add the priority numbers in a statement what that means so that the decision-makers in Topeka understand that we're prioritizing these projects one through five.
Okay.
And the letter other than that is, is well-written.
Very good. And who made the second?
I did.
You did.
So you're, actually, what you're really doing is you're amending your original motion.
That's correct.
As opposed to another substitute one?
If that's, if that's right.
Right. That'd be better.
Okay.
Okay. And so I'm okay with that second.
Okay. Very good.
Or that, that amendment. But if there's another motion, then I'll listen to that, too.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
So we can make a substitute motion on an amended motion, correct, Mr. Chair?
We should be able to make a substitute motion to the amended.
I would make a substitute motion that we prioritize it one through four, and that we have a statement about Arc 95 that I would like Commissioner Howell and yourself, Mr. Chairman, to work together with Mr. Spears and come up with that for the statement about Arc 95 after the top four priorities. So that is my motion.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Howell?
Okay. So once again, it's not that I wouldn't support that. I just think that it's unnecessary to separate that that way. So I would much rather vote on numbering this one through five, let that fail, and then we can come back with another motion to do exactly what Commissioner O'Donnell has recommended. I would support that. But once again, these motions are out of order, and so my opinion is I have to vote no on this motion, and I would support that motion once the base motion fails. So I want to make sure that people are interpreting this correctly. I'm not against any of these projects. I just think they all have, they should all have a place on the list, and there's no reason to separate them out. So again, it's about process and our, and our motions here. I'm very supportive of all of these. So let that be clear. If I have vote no, that's my plan at the moment. It's not because I don't support them. I said, there's no reason to separate these projects. And a final comment would be, as I said earlier, this is a fluid list. We're going to find other things that are regionally significant. The Northwest, sorry, the North Junction wasn't even on our last list. Now it's the most important thing on our list. So we're going to discover things that are more important. We're going to discuss them and insert them in our processes when we find them. It doesn't mean we can't add things to our list, but this is a list that's a snapshot right now to the state of Kansas, what we know today. And so there's no reason, no reason why we would separate that one out. And so with that, I'll be voting no on the substitute motion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that we are singling it out still, because there are so many other projects. I believe we're showing that this is important to the county, but when we are dealing with a project that is many decades in the future, we're dealing with a project that has no design, and these other four do, I don't think it's fair to the other priorities that we have to list it in the exact same way, even though it's an important project. So I think we are still singling it out, even though we know there's at least a dozen other projects that some of the smaller cities in Sedgwick County want, and some of the outlying communities and other counties want. So I believe we are giving this a lot of attention, and I think it's, I think it's important that we do this in this manner. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Randzau?
I think we need to include in number 95. I'd ask Commissioner O'Donnell to consider admitting his motion and then let them work on the language, because when we send this up there, we don't want any wishy-washiness. We need them to know we have five priorities, and if there's enough money to go to all five, then we, then... See, that's one of the concerns I was looking at, talking about yesterday. How much money do we think we can get? And trying to figure out how much could each of these projects cost? We don't want to end up at the end of the day and have an opportunity and kind of miss out because we were wishy-washy and there's no money available. If you want to work on the statement, et cetera, I mean, otherwise, it's going to look like it's kind of the stepchild of the whole list there, and I don't think we want to send that message to the group up there personally.
Okay. But Commissioner Randzau, you do serve on WAMPO, and you recognize that this is at least 20 years in the future, and even if money came down tomorrow, we weren't ready for it.
Well, if we got money to come down for, then it may not be 20 years in advance. But I know how long the Northwest Bypass is going to take. If it's not, if Northwest Bypass isn't paid for by one of these things, it's going to be 20 years down the road. Some of these other things, I mean, this is a potential for get large amounts of money that could accelerate the pace of all of these projects, is what I'm thinking, okay? I mean, you know the pace we're at right now as far as buying right-of-way. We're looking at accelerating all of these, and if we don't have them on the list specifically and have that vision, I'm afraid we'll miss out. So I'll make a substitute to the substitute that says, "We approve this with numbers, one through five, and allow the chairman and Public Works and Commissioner Howell to work on the language to fine-tune it." I think it needs to be prioritized, and we need to be ready to take advantage of the dollars that may come our way and have the vision for the whole Sedgwick County.
Second.
Commissioner Enruh?
I prefer the first substitute, so I'll be voting no on the second substitute.
Well, I don't know that we can make a substitute to a substitute, can we?
We have no rules, Mr. Chairman.
I think we can do whatever we want to do.
Very good. All right. Madam Clerk, call a roll. Substitute to the substitute.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Randzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
No.
Chairman Dennis?
No. All right. Madam Clerk, call a substitute motion.
Mr. Chairman, would you please have it read back, so you know what we're voting on again?
Sure.
We prioritize items one through four and a statement about Arc 95, and that Commissioner Howell, Chairman Dennis, and Mr. Spears do come up with the statement.
Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Randzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you all. Very good. And I'm sorry that was so painful, but I think we came up with a workable solution. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other?
Okay. Did we do legislative?
We did. Yes, sir, we did, but Commissioner Howell asked for an off-agenda item.
Okay. But do we have anything for legislative?
I don't have anything specifically. There's a session, I believe the 30th, for discussion of those issues.
Okay. Very good. All right. Next item, then.
Other?
Other. Does any of the commissioners have anything to discuss on other? Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let our public know that I participated in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Conference yesterday at the Hyatt Regency. There were over 300 attendees there, all who have, most of the people that were there actually work in workforce development and trying to find jobs for people who are out of jobs and try to work with businesses who are seeking employees. It was a two-day conference, and I got to participate on one panel, but I just wanted to let the public know that there is an emphasis on workforce development and that the folks at Wichita State University manage the program for Kansas Works, the state board. And I guess I just give kudos to Paula Downs, a former Sedgwick County employee who managed the whole program. It went very well. A lot of people there, and it was a timely conference. So just an FYI item, and that's all I had. Mr. Chair?
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Did you want to mention it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Just good news for the county. Mark Bennett was named Prosecutor of the Year from the Kansas County and District Attorneys Association. And so, kudos to Sedgwick County's own Mark Bennett. And Chief Attorney Tom Wyler received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the same association. So it's very good for two very distinguished gentlemen in our county that do great work on a daily basis. So we're very lucky to have them representing the citizens of Sedgwick County and working alongside all of us.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that up for us. I appreciate it very much, and congratulations to Mark Bennett. Anyone else have anything for other? Seeing nothing? I've got a couple of things that I'd like to talk about. The first one is, we saw a little video about the zoo at the beginning. The zoo board has been working for about six months to come up with that vision for the next 25 years. I think it's a fantastic vision. They're actually looking at some private companies that have hotels, to be able to put a destination hotel there, something like Great Wolf Lodge up in Kansas City with an indoor water park and so forth that has an African theme. That's further down line. The initial stage one, phase one is the entrance way and so forth. But first, I want to just congratulate the Zoological Board for working six months diligently to come up with a brand-new strategic plan, master plan, for the next 25 years in the future. As it said in the video at the beginning, it is our number-one tourist attraction, and it can be even better in the future. The second thing that I want to bring up is that at our last meeting, we had a motion to hire an independent outside agency to take a look at leadership within the county and to give an unbiased report back to our commissioners, so that we could review it. One of the things in the motion was to hire an outside independent individual. That action has taken place. On Monday, Commissioner Randzau and I were going to go over and meet with that outside individual, and Commissioner Randzau declined to attend. I understand that advice of some folks that he respects, and I understand. The problem is, it kind of handicaps us on what we can do at this point. We were going to have an executive session today, and we're not going to be calling for an executive session to be able to take a look at the scope of that outside independent agency. And I was hoping that we could be very open to the public and to show that our, to our staff, that we care deeply about what they think. But if, Commissioner Randzau also indicated to me that he would not attend an executive session today if we held one. I anticipate, since he wasn't going to, and Commissioner Howell voted against it last time, that he probably would not attend an executive session. If that's the case, we have to have, our quorum is four people to hold any kind of meeting, and we wouldn't be able to hold an executive session anyway. So therefore, we're not calling for an executive session today. I hope that they reconsider, because we need to be open and transparent to our citizens that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we have good governance here within Sedgwick County and that we have leadership in place. So I would ask them to reconsider developing a scope. I did meet very, very briefly with the individual, independent individual on Monday, and provided him a copy of what I thought may be a scope. But unless we have all of our commissioners that believe that we need an outside independent agency, I don't know that we can move forward with that. So that's where we're at right now. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on where we're at right now. So with that, we're adjourned.
Wait, I have something to say.
Fire, fire district.
I want to respond, Commissioner.
Commissioner Randzau, you're responding outside of the meeting. I have adjourned the Sedgwick County Board, but you're always welcome to speak.
Well, first of all, your actions are inappropriate to not allow them to respond within the meeting. But since you brought some statements up, let me make this very clear. I told the chairman that I will not participate in this scheme of hiring outside counsel or any executive session associated with it, because I believe it is a cover-up or an attempt to cover up commissioner misconduct. Misconduct that very well could be determined to be criminal in nature. That's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you. Okay. We have adjourned the Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'd like to call to order the fire district number-one meeting for October 10, 2018. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Randzau?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Enruh?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on the public agenda? Seeing no one, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of September 5, 2018.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone's had a chance to review the fire minutes from September 5 and September 19 of 2018. Move to approve both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?